Recording.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda tonight is the proclamation for National Library Week. Hi.
Hello.
How are you?
I am doing good. For those who may not know me, hello, everyone. My name is Chris Semenatore. I am the Adult and Information Services Librarian for the Lacey branch of the Ocean County Library. I'm here representing the Lacey branch and obviously the Ocean County Library to get the proclamation for National Libraries Week. So, thank you to the mayor or township for this lovely honor for the library system.
Okay, I'll read it to you.
Okay.
Whereas the libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn new skills, and pursue their passions, no matter where they are in life's journey. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all the members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or psyo...I'm sorry.
Socioeconomic.
Socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries adapt to ever-changing needs of their communities, developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are diverse as the population they serve. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of loyal connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and share community goals. Whereas libraries play a pivotal role in economic development by providing resources and support for job seekers, entrepreneurs, small businesses, thus contributing to local prosperity and growth. Whereas libraries make choices that are good for environment and make sense economically, creating thriving communities for a better tomorrow. And whereas libraries are treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both physical and digital resources for present and future generations. And whereas libraries are essential public good and fundamental institutions in democratic societies working to improve society, protect the right to education and literacy, and promote the free exchange of information, ideas for all. Whereas libraries, librarians, and all the library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Peggy Sue Juliano, Mayor of Lacey Township, proclaim National Library Week, April 7th through the 13th, 2024. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit the library and celebrate the adventures and opportunities that they unlock for us every day. Ready, set, library.
Thank you very much, Peggy Sue Juliano.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's so nice, Christine, it's nice to be here like this. Right? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Deputy Mayor, would you like to make any comments?
Yeah, I mean, known Chris for a very long time, and she's good enough to host. When we've all been fortunate enough to be mayor or meet the mayor, we all, I'm sure, took our children there. It's great to have a branch here centrally located in town, right at the crossroads of our town. So, I know you're doing so much more than just offering books. I mean, you have audio and outreach now, people have classes there. My people at county health did a diabetes and a nurse program over there. So, thanks for the service. It's a real value add to our community, and call us anytime you need us. Thank you.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes, my mom is one of the founding members of the Friends at a Library. She's still doing it. So, the library has always been part of my life. I remember all the book fairs that we had that were held at the Schoolhouse Museum, and like I said, just she's been at the library a lot. So, it's very near and dear to me, and we appreciate all the things that the library does for the township.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, as the Commissioner of the Ocean County Library System, very proud of what we put out. Lacey is one of the shining stars. We do talk about it in our Commissioners Meeting, and I just want everyone to know that last year, the Ocean County Library System was in the running for the national, to be the best in the country. And I think we, it's like being in the, it's pretty like the Sweet Sixteen at the NCAAs, that went down to sixteen. However, which really upset me, was Long Branch won it. So, I'm not happy that our, to the north won it, but it is phenomenal. I would hope that if you're just going to get books, explore it more. Anything you want, you can get online. Okay, there's two apps out there, music, newspapers, whatever you want, you can get it online, and if they don't have it online, ask them, and they'll do the best they can. And if they don't, send me an email. Okay? So, no, they do a good job at Lacey. It's one of the federal ones that we have, and we, it's one of the ones we have least trouble with. So, congratulations. Thank you.
On a personal note, my children were raised there. We went there every week when they were little ones, and just recently, I was there for Meet the Mayor Night, and the library was hosting the art show for our elementary schools, and it was, what an event. The place was packed, packed with people. Actually, I got a text message from somebody that said, "Is everything okay? Because I see a lot of cars over there. What's going on?" You know? So, it was really a nice evening, got to talk to a lot of people, and thank you, appreciate it very much. Thanks for being here, too. Appreciate that. That's it. That's it? Okay? Special use permit, Lacey United Methodist Church Car Show, 5/11/2024.
So, the Lacey United Methodist Church has reached out, and they are seeking permission to host a car show event on Saturday, May 11th, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., with the rain date of May 25th, and this will be held in their parking lot. Can I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, I have to abstain.
So, we need to retake the motion?
Yes, I'll do a roll call vote, so can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Stay.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
That's all I have unless anyone has anything else.
No?
Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Act. Public, excuse me, pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of this meeting. Please rise for the salute flag and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First reading of Ordinance 2024-06, amending Chapter 185 to revise certain regulations on coastal and flood zone areas.
So, we have this ordinance almost ready to go. We unfortunately cannot introduce it tonight because we are still waiting on a response from the DEP, so I am going to move on to item number two.
Okay. First reading of Ordinance 2024-7, establishing a cap bank.
An ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank in accordance with NJSA 40A:4-45.14. This is part of our annual budget process. We adopt this ordinance every year, and it allows the township to bank and use certain appropriations in future years. So, first reading.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. First reading of Ordinance 2024-8, providing for various capital improvements and acquisitions of various capital equipment.
An ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, providing for various capital improvements and acquisition of various capital equipment appropriating $4,251,560, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $3,778,000 bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof authorized in and by the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey. This includes the purchase of various fire and EMS equipment, building improvements to Lenoka Harbor EMS, ambulance remounting, the acquisition of public safety patrol vehicles, various public works vehicles, and public works equipment, whippet upgrades, improvements to Sunrise Boulevard, Cranberry Hill Railroad Avenue, and the southwest Barnegat Pines, dredging of Stouts Creek, improvements at the South Docks, and a roof replacement for a township building.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Second reading of Ordinance 2024-5, replacing Chapter 141 of the Township Code in titles "Bingles" and "Raffles."
Ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, repealing Chapter 141 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacey entitled "Bingo and Raffles," and establishing new Chapter 141 entitled "Bingos and Raffles" so as to make certain revisions to the Township Code pertaining to the issuance of bingo and raffle licenses. This is second reading.
Second reading, open up the floor, public comment.
So, you done, make a motion to close the floor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-101, certifying compliance with the EEOC.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, certifying governing body compliance with the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's Enforcement Guidance on the Consideration of Arrests and Conviction Records in Employment Decisions Under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. This is another one of our annual resolutions.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-102, introducing the 2024 Municipal Budget.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, introducing the local municipal budget of the Township of Lacey for the fiscal year 2024. General appropriations for municipal purposes is $39,766,136.30. Reserve for uncollected taxes is $1,526,108.70. Total general appropriations is $41,292,245. Less anticipated revenues is $19,764,764, and the amount to be raised by taxes is $21,527,481. So, this, with that being said, the tax increase is 2.7 cents. So, what does that mean for the average homeowner? The homeowner assessed at $287,000 could expect to pay $77 annually, or $6.41 per month for the upcoming year. And I just want to state that the public hearing for the budget will be on April 25th at 6:00 p.m. right here in this room.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-103, amending the temporary operating budget.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, providing for emergency temporary operating budget in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 40A:4-20. This is just to extend our temporary budget for a few more weeks until our regular budget is in place.
Move it. Second.
Deputy Mayor Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-104, recalling a club liquor license.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, recalling a club liquor license previously held by the Forked River Columbian Club. The state ABC reached out to us because this license has been inactive, and since the club no longer exists, they asked us to do a resolution to memorialize the recalling of it.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-105, awarding or not awarding a contract for community-wide energy...aggregation. I'm sorry.
Aggregation?
Aggregation. Thank you. Thank you.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to a third-party supplier. This is incorrect.
Not awarding.
Not awarding.
I know. Thank you.
Not awarding a contract to a third-party power supplier to provide electric generation services to Lacey Community Energy Aggregation Participants, and to provide government energy aggregation services in connections with LCEA. So, the market is currently unfavorable, so it's best to stick with JCPN, and there's a possibility that we go out to bid again for this later in the year.
Move it.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-106, authorizing the ex...excuse...I'm having trouble with words.
That's okay. Authorizing the execution of an agreement.
A grant agreement with the County of Ocean.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an inter-local service agreement with the County of Ocean for the fiscal year 24 Ocean County Sheriff's Traffic Enforcement Program Grant.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-107, authorizing a change in the dock rental fees.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing a change in dock rental fees. We are changing it, as discussed at the March 14 caucus meeting, from a flat fee to $65 per foot.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-108, authorizing the refund of building department fees.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of building department fees issued by the Lacey Township Building Department.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-109, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Resolution 2024-110, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills. This is in the amount of $6,727,361.47.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes. Motion to approve caucus meetings from March 14th, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes from March 14th, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve executive session meeting minutes from March 14th, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion to approve the raffle license for Lacey Youth Football and Cheer and the Forked River Tuna Club.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just want to commend everyone in Town Hall and, of course, everyone up here for the work that's been done on the budget. These budgets are never easy. They take a long time, and we know that it's your money. We all have skin in the game, too. So, we try to make our obligations, and we try not to make frivolous purchases. And I think that when you look at the municipal portion of our budget, we try to do it the right way. So, we invite your input, and I want to thank everybody, and thank everyone that had input for here as well. That's important. So, in that regard, you've heard me talk about being a champion for business. There are ratables in town. So, last week, I did a radio interview. It was entitled "Learn All About the Great Things Happening in Lacey Township" with the Southern Ocean County Chamber of Commerce. I am in between appointments now, but I served on the Ocean County Board of Tourism and Business Development, and the person who interviewed me currently sits on the board. And I will tell you, you know, in Lacey, we do it right. If you have an opportunity to go to Facebook and go to the Southern Ocean page, where you see it, it's been shared widely throughout the county. It's a good interview. And what I said in there is, what we try to do in Lacey is, we're in the customer service business. We try to make it a point within the realm of ethical reason to say yes. We don't, when somebody comes to us, has a plan or an idea for a business, again, within the realm of ethical reason, we don't have them push an application under a two-inch-thick piece of glass to them, say, "Here, fill this out, and by the way, give me, write a check, and that's what your permit costs." We walk people through it. We don't wait 10 days for zoning permits, or 20 days for other types of permits, construction permits. We act on these permits when we receive them. We want to try to do everything right up into the foot of the cross to help the applicant without actually getting into their day-to-day or being responsible for making a business plan with them. We want to support business in Lacey Township. We talked about the future. I'm becoming down here, they're going to do a piece on the whippet, and I say all the time, how much money since this meeting started, drove up and down past the Parkway North and Parkway South, this string of Pearl's towns here on Route 9. It shouldn't just be the larger towns, Seaside Point, the traditional towns, LBI, that get that money. Our businesses deserve, and we can get into it. So, what happened with the whippet? It paid for itself several times over already. It's booked out for the summer. You can book it for children's events. What happens now? It helps the local economy, and we have some food trucks there now. People are employed. People say, "Well, you know, we can't do it. We don't have an ocean. We don't..." We did it, and other towns can do it, too. I hope they don't. I hope we stay the only whippet in town and in the county, and because we entertain kids from all around the state, they get healthy activity that's stimulating from all around the state, not just in Ocean County. So, we talked about small businesses. We talked about the importance of applying for grants. I mean, when we get grants and we're able to make purchases, that's better serving the people of Lacey Township and coming out with less of a tax bite. Talked about property values. I've said it here a lot. A lot of people have come up to the microphone and said, and I'll close with this, "Hey, look, we're building too much. We're building, we're 86 square miles, and a lot of it is protected pine lands. I don't think we're ever going to look like New York City." Our property values continue to go up year after year after year. It sounds cliche, but they're making more people, but they're not making more land and knowing the Pine Lands Commission, which is a good thing. I don't think we're ever going to be able to build out completely like some other towns to the north of us and industrial North Jersey as well. So, we have a great quality of life. We talked about that. I bring this out to you. What we want to do with the county, when they come out to open and clip a ribbon on a business, they give a whole social media package, some estimates worth $10,000. We want to help that fledgling business. So, Mayor Juliano's been really above board, goes out, clips a ribbon. If we can't do it with the county on, I want our business to get the county and the mayor. If we can't do it on a weekday when the county's not around, we'll go out and we'll do it with the county at some other point, and then the business has two of them. I want the new business to come up to the microphone. Do anything we can. I know it's a little long-winded. I want to congratulate, we have Forked River, Lenoka Harbor in the back of the room. Mayor Juliano swore those good people in. And one last thing, the tragic loss coalition, Mayor Juliano, myself, and I don't want to take all the mayor's sunshine, it was really important. We've had some loss in our schools. The mayor and I both attended, and we had some really strong academic counselors in there, tragic loss counselors. They're going to be there to help take care of these kids because they need it. I applaud our colleagues at the school for realizing that need, and at no direct cost to the schools, that I know of. Those people are going to be there, and I took the liberty, after speaking with Mayor and Juliano, invite them to the microphone for five minutes on our April 11th meeting to talk about it. If people need help, they're there. I got no dog in the race. I just know they do good work, and I, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate everybody being here tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Kenneth?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, too, just want to piggyback on some of the things that Pete was saying. All the fire companies had their installation dinners over the last two weeks, and I just want to thank the, all the members of the fire companies that volunteer their time, time and energy to, again, volunteer to serve the township. They're constantly getting put in positions where there's more mandates and more rules, especially the leadership. If you're in a leadership position in the fire companies, it gets harder and harder because you have, they're, you know, the state is asking you to do more and more things. There are people always trying to put more rules to make it, you know, almost make it harder to become a volunteer. So, I just want to thank everybody that volunteers, and not just the fire company, but anybody that volunteers in town. It's a lot of work. I also want to commend our deputy mayor for, he was on the podcast for 91.9 WBNJ, it's the Shore Region Podcast. Pete was on there advocating for the township. He does a phenomenal job when you put in that position. He's done it a number of times, and he really does a good job of selling the township and pointing out a lot of the activity that's going on in town. So, I just want to thank him on behalf of the committee for that. And finally, also to, I guess what Pete was touching on a little bit as far as the business, the Ryan Homes developments sold out. The townhouses along Route 9, that development sold out. We did that ribbon cutting, I want to say, like, last July. So, that was really fast. I forget how many, 70 units? I forget. But that project, that's been in the works, how long this stuff takes in New Jersey. That's really been in the works for probably seven years. They, when they finally started, it only took them a year to complete that project. But that's part of the problem, and that's why it probably sold out as quickly as it did, because it takes so long to get approvals now that once, you know, there's just a backlog of demand, which is why, you know, one of the reasons why house prices are increasing as they are. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple, pardon, couple of things here. The code is out, the new rules are in, and if you've read the new rules, they've stripped some of our protection away. So, it's going to come more on to the township. We can be sued easier than we were before. So, it's, this is not a good thing. The Ninth District went against it, so I'm happy about that. happy about that. On a lighter note here, I happen to read the IRS website pretty regularly. So if you haven't filed your 2002 taxes, because for whatever reason...
Two thousand and two?
I'm sorry. Two thousand and twenty. Pardon me. Two thousand and twenty. Two thousand and twenty. For whatever reason, you just didn't feel like filing them, or you forgot about them, or whatever. You have until May seventeenth this year to file them, because if you're getting a return, they will give it to you. After that, you're out of luck. And according to the IRS website, there's several billion dollars in there that people, they should go to the people, but they got to file the return. So that's the return. And the last thing I have to say is, happy Easter, everybody.
Tim, I find interesting while you have three years to file your taxes to get your refund, if you were in the opposite, where you owe money, they can go back in perpetuity to get the money from you, but you can't, you had to get it from them.
That's the one thing about it. They go back and audit your 2020 taxes, they find something, go all the way back to 2000. It's all open. So you got to be careful with it.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm just going to repeat a lot of things that have already been talked about. First of all, I want to just thank Linda and Veronica and the committee for working as hard as we did on getting the budget taken care of, and it really is a fantastic budget this year. Also, we had our Lenoka Harbor, our Fork River, and our Bamber Fire. I swore them all in to their new positions, and again, reminding everybody that if we did not have them as our volunteers, you would not even believe where our taxes would go at that point. So it's something to always walk past them and say thank you, because without them, we'd be in trouble. I also attended a mayor's breakfast this week, and I know some people might say, oh, all you're doing is promoting what you're doing. It's not. It's my job as the mayor to attend all of these functions and be there for the prayer service the other night at the high school, for the breakfast for the Lenoka Harbor EMS. It's a job. When you take on this responsibility, it is a job to follow through on all that, and that's what I'm doing. So it's not that I'm here promoting myself. I'm here talking about the things that go on in our town and that I attend. I also attended a nice gathering at Pheasant Run. It was really nice talking to everybody out there, too, and very informative. I felt that we got a lot of information out to them. So that was very enjoyable, too. I want to remind everybody that next week, the kids are all off from school, and there's always a lot going on. If the weather's good, they're going to be on their bikes and their scooters, and they're walking to the park and everything else. So let's really pay attention out there to the kids walking around. It's very important. We have enough to deal with, and we don't want to add that to our list. And with that comment, I will say everybody have a wonderful Easter, and I'll open the floor. If I could, Mr. Bender, just, I would like to call this young lady, because she's not feeling good, so I wanted to get her up so that she can get home, okay? Come on up.
No, I'm not saying that way.
No, she just had dental, she just had dental surgery, so...
And the novocaine is wearing off.
Just state your name.
Laura Shetlick. So first of all, I wanted to thank you, Mayor. We spoke about the cleanup day that I'm trying to get going.
Yes.
And so I wanted to thank you and the council for the bags, the gloves, and the grabbers. Unfortunately, we had to cancel it last Saturday because of the downpour, but the rain date, fingers crossed, for good weather is April thirteenth.
Thirteenth, okay.
So it looks like a lot of people are interested to get out there and help pick up some litter.
I was going to ask you, how'd you make out with response? Because I know you were putting out an email. So did you get a good response back?
Yeah, I put out another update on the Lacy Chatter post, my original post.
Okay.
So this coming week, I'm going to go back and look at where everybody said that they could go and try to map it out, so.
All right.
And I'll be meeting in the parking lot here that Saturday morning, I guess, nine-thirty.
Okay.
I'll stay here for about an hour, and...
Just make sure everybody's got what they need.
Yeah, I just want to, I know you need the grabbers back.
Right.
So I'm not sure the best way to handle that is to, like, have them sign it out, or just say, like, where do they return them?
You know what?
Well, I've kind of always have done it on the honor system kind of thing. We didn't make anybody sign them out, and they do get returned. So they can either get returned here at the municipal building, or they can return them at Public Works.
Okay.
Right, yes.
Okay, great.
At their convenience, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Just another, on that point, like, I've been trying to drive up and down roads and figure out, like, what is the worst area? Like, let's say in front of ShopRite.
Okay.
That whole stretch there. Whose responsibility is it?
Well, if we're looking at, like, out in front of the ShopRite there, that would be their responsibility.
It's like right off the sidewalk. So it gets caught on that hill, you know, all along the sidewalk there.
Right. Well, it's the same thing you and I conversated about out in front of Home Depot there, that one area there. But they were out there cleaning the other day, so hopefully, yeah. And we had a lot of wind, so of course, that created a lot more trash in the area when we had that big windstorm, so that brought on some, too. So, but if you have certain areas that you don't think would be an area where people want to go, let me know, and maybe I can, you know, get ahold of them.
Through code enforcement, we can notify the property owners that they have to pick up the litter and the debris, and that has happened. And like, I'll even give you an example. Before the plastic bag ban, you used to see a lot of those plastic bags, the yellow ones from ShopRite or the Walmart ones that would blow across the street, especially from Walmart. So we would notify Walmart that it's their responsibility. I mean, it's their bag, even though they might not have dumped it. But, yeah, we do notify the property owners through code enforcement, you know, based on complaints that they need to go and clean up their areas.
Okay, great. Second thing. Oh, back last year, we talked about doing a vegetation meeting regarding the mowing at the Fork River Bayfront Park.
Right. We have not discussed a date yet, but we are.
Right, okay. I know the mowing is coming up. May is coming up, and we talked about the possibility of taking a walk down there.
Right.
Where I can show you and whoever else wants to come where the milkweed plants, year after year, are getting hacked down before they get a chance to do what they're supposed to do.
Chance to grow, right.
If we could take a walk, maybe that'd be great. I could point out that, you know, areas that we should just leave alone for that reason. But, third, I called the DPW twice, I think, once Monday and once last week regarding a dead cat that was, it's been there for three weeks on the side of the road by Marius, right before Marius, if you're heading south on Route Nine. So before Caffrey's, you got Marius, and there's a house there that looks like it's abandoned, and there's been a dead cat about this far off the road that probably got hit and landed there.
That's the state of New Jersey, and that gets called into their, the line that we have to call it in. It's not DPW that picks it up.
Okay, no, I found that out, because I called them, and the first time I spoke to the gentleman there, he said it wasn't their responsibility, and how about we just let nature take its course, which I felt was kind of...
Who said that to you?
I didn't get his, I didn't get his name, whoever answered the phone, which I kind of felt was very disrespectful.
Because it's on the asphalt, and nature's not going to, well, I guess, but it's...
I mean, I've been watching this poor thing decay for three weeks now. I mean, it was probably someone's cat. I mean, if it was a dog or a deer, I don't think it would be left there. It just, I don't know. I feel like we could do better. And I know it's not DPW, but he said that he was going to call Animal Control. So the second time I called, he said he spoke to Animal Control and that they couldn't go on the property because it was private property. So here lies his...
We'll get it, we'll get it resolved.
I'll get it taken care of.
Three weeks later, it's like, okay. Thank you. I'm going to go home now.
Thank you. Yes, all right. Take care. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Bender.
Barry Bender's somewhere in Lacy Township. I'm, well, I have a little rundown here. I'll make it in five minutes. Okay. Since I've started our efforts to save the Warden House, I've gotten many questions from residents as to what's going on now. There's lots of people out there who are concerned about the building. To clarify things for folks watching here and throughout Lacy Township, I'm going to run down a twenty-year timeline, I'll make it in five minutes, of public records in regard to anything having to do with the pending sale of Block 284, Lot 101, 1.01, I'm sorry.
Excuse me for one second, Mr. Bender.
Sure.
Excuse me, Mr. Senza, Mr. Senza, I can hear you all the way in here. Go ahead, Mr. Bender.
Okay. Which contains the original Charles A. Smith Community Hall, along with the Warden House. In 2004, a historic survey was completed by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection regarding the impact on three historic buildings, which included the Warden House as part of the Route Nine Lacy Road planned intersection reconstruction. That was in 2004. The following year, in 2005, as a result of that NJDEP historic survey, Deputy of the New Jersey Historic Preservation Office, Dorothy Guzzo, declared the Warden House eligible for inclusion in the National Registry of Historic Places under Criterion C. Five years later on, in December of 2010, prior to beginning the intersection reconstruction, Lacy Township authorized the sale of part of Block 284, Lot 101, to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection via Ordinance 2010-30. In March of 2011, Lacy Township received $119,000 from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for part of Block 284, Lot 1.01. It was approximately 5,087 square feet to widen Route Nine for the intersection reconstruction. Now we jump a few years on, and on a different note, in December of 2020, Lacy Township via Ordinances 2020-25 and 2020-26 authorized $1 million for the acquisition of Block 282, Lot 15.01, which is 2.03 acres and improvements known as the Knights of Columbus Hall, 15 East Lacy Road. It would seem that this was done to clear the way for the sale of Block 284, Lot 101, in regard to the encumbrances related to the Charles A. Smith Community Hall. Not quite two years later, on October 27, 2022, Lacy Township put forth Resolution 2022-301, authorizing the sale of, quote, "surplus real property by open public auction to sell Block 284, Lot 1.01." The description read, "Not needed for public use." The GovDeals Comm Auction, number 23383/1, with a minimum bid of $2.9 million, was a result of this resolution. This was announced at Township Committee meetings. Details of the auction were 101 North Main Street, corner lot Lacy Road, and Route Nine, 1.92 acres with two buildings that could be used or removed, referring to the 1926 Charles A. Smith Community Hall and the historic 1850 Warden House. On February 9, 2023, the GovDeals listing for $2.9 million opened and later closed on April 17, 2023, without a bid being accepted by the township. Three months later, on May 25, 2023, a new GovDeals listing described as "second chance offer" opened for the reduced minimum bid of $1.5 million for Block 284, Lot 1.01. The auction opened that day at 9:37 a.m. and closed in five minutes later at 9:42 a.m. With the receipt of one bid for $1.5 million, we now know the bid was from DeGeorge Development LLC. Oops, I missed the bottom of this. On December 21, 2024, I filed an application for the Warden House to be listed on the State National Register of Historic Places via the New Jersey Historic Preservation Office. The township was notified of this filing. On January 3, 2024, a professional structural evaluation was done, confirming that the Warden House could be moved to a new location. The inspection states, "The structure has no visible indications that another move would be of concern if done by professionals." On February 22, 2024, I delivered a cease and desist letter to this committee during the public portion of its meeting to halt the sale of the Charles A. Smith Community Hall, specifically citing the resolution that was agreed upon by Lacy Township to keep the building for use of its residents as a condition of the detransfer. As of today, ten seconds, as of today, and to the best of my knowledge, the sale of Block 284, Lot 101 is still pending, and I'd like to thank the committee for bearing with me during this information share. Last comment, history matters. Save the Warden House.
Thank you for your comments. Monica? Just state your name, please.
Monica Sispero. I'm here representing a couple of groups. One of them is the Methodist Church and the Mount Zion program that we have for homeless veterans. It is the only homeless shelter in Ocean County, and we have it for veterans, and four at a time can stay there. It's a background story. In January of this past year, one of our veterans here in town passed away by suicide. When he came back from Afghanistan, he tried various therapies, and one of them was art, and he's left us 100 paintings. His wife wants something positive coming out of this. So what's happening is, on April 12, Friday night, at the Charles A. Smith Community Center, between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m., there's going to be a dinner catered by the Captain's Inn. There's going to be live music, and there's going to be a display of paintings. We invite you to pay $25 and pick up a ticket from me, or at the Methodist Church office, or at VetWork, or at Captain's Inn. You can pick up a ticket. Tickets are going. We would appreciate your support, because we want something positive coming out of this tragedy.
So, just so we're clear, so the paintings will be for sale, too?
The paintings will be for sale. They'll be all around the room. They'll be by bid. So you'll just go and write your bid. And by the way, the $25 that you're paying to get your dinner and the live music are also $25 toward the purchase of a painting. So come for two hours, come have a great time, come make a difference in this community.
I already got my tickets.
You got your tickets. Anybody else who would like a ticket, I've got them with me. If you get 10 people, you can have a reserved table. Otherwise, you're going to make new friends. Six to eight p.m. Here is something, and you'll need to get your tickets soon, please. You need to...
Good job, Monica.
...account, and...
She's doing great. Yes. It's a fantastic program. Very good. Thank you.
Again, we've had high school people with suicide, and we've had adults. We need to pull together and support each other. So please come so we can support our vets. We need, we need a radio. Thank you.
Thank you.
April 12. Friday, April 12.
From six to eight.
Eight p.m. at the Charles A. Smith Community Center. Come up, you do buy your tickets ahead, because I can't guarantee you a seat. My goal is to have a sold-out.
Thank you.
How many, any table, Monica?
Ten.
All right. Anybody else from the audience that'd like to speak? Come on up. How are you?
Good day doing. My name is Thomas DiPaolo.
Can you spell that last name for me?
DiPaolo, D-E-P-A-L-O. Good evening, Mayor and Township Committee. I reside in the Pheasant Run community of Lacy. I'm here to rerepresent our community and present you a petition signed by 298 residents of the Pheasant Run. We are requesting the township and state to conduct studies for the purpose of implementing traffic calming measures, reduce traffic speeds, and increase safety of all our users in our community. Our community is poorly lit, and we need to have increased visibility during night hours. We had an incident in January 2024 due to speeding and dimly lit streets. The Pheasant Run thanks you in advance for taking the time to review and consider this petition.
Thank you. Please bring it.
I present this.
Sure, of course you can.
Is, what, you're trying to get the speed limit? Is it too quick there? Too, yeah?
It's 25, though. It's as low as you can go. Because they're not private streets, they're public streets. The lighting we can look at. Maybe we could switch it out to some of the street lightings, to LED, which would give you more visibility. You have to do it in blocks of 12 units. That's how JCPN does it, but that's something we can look at. Okay. Thank you. And you're, are you meaning every street, or maybe the heavily traveled ones with the lighting?
The whole complex is renewed.
Right. So, yeah, and so we'll look at the lighting, but we might focus on the heavily traveled ones first, and then build into that. Okay.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks for being here. Anyone else from the audience?
Good evening. Happy Easter, and I'm not sure, this might be more than five, the five-minute rule's still in effect?
Still in effect.
Okay, so I'll probably come up the second time for my Charles Smith complaint. I've been researching the township website as far as what the township has financially, money on hand, money invested for the township, and money owed out. And I don't know, I can't find it, does the budget include what we have, what we owe, and what we have on reserve?
Linda, I'm going to turn it on to you.
Budget document, you have not had all of that information, or you can get it on, like, the annual financial statement, which is also posted on the website, or an annual debt statement?
I looked on the website, and the most recent information I found on the website is from 2022. What I, what, okay, I'm going to make a proposal, that this committee, on a monthly basis, announces publicly how much money we have on hand, how much money have we have invested into different, whatever you invest in, and how much money do we owe out. For instance, like the Knights of Columbus building, do we have a mortgage on that building? Yes or no?
No, we don't have a mortgage. We took out a bond and borrowed money. We don't mortgage things.
Well, a mortgage is a bond, okay. So how much is owed on that bond for the Knights of Columbus building?
Off the top of my head, we don't know.
You don't know?
Because they're lumped together.
Could you publicly make that available next meeting, please?
It's probably in...
So we could find out what's going on?
...the annual debt statement, right? So in the annual debt statement, it's already listed as to what the balance is as of 12/31 of '23.
That's online?
Yes, it's online.
Under where? Where?
Under the Finance Department, and then it will say Financial Documents, and you drop that down to what calendar year you're looking for.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though. They're not specifically, when it's bonded, it's all lumped together and then bonded.
If you look at the annual financial statement, if it is, well, you're right. So it might just be average capital improvements, so you're not going to know what's in that.
Well, I think, I think there should be further transparency to break down what we owe money on, so when big-ticket items come up, we know where we stand as the citizens and taxpayers of Lacy Township, what indebtedness we already have. Because unofficially, I've been told recently that this township is in debt $19 million. Is that true?
No. So you have to pull up the annual debt statement and read it in full, so if...
You don't know? You, excuse me, what is your position?
I'm just going to say one thing. If you ask a question, let her answer it.
I don't even know who this woman is.
She's our CFO.
She is our CFO. She's been at plenty of meetings to know that she's our CFO. But if you ask a question, allow her the time to answer you.
Okay. Can I ask her what position she holds?
Surely.
What position do you hold?
I'm CFO.
Okay.
Of Lacy Township.
Okay. So, sitting here, standing here right now, you do not know if the township is $19 million in debt? That's your...
Exact amount. You're throwing me off, because I don't have that in front of me. So, but there is an annual debt statement that I'm required to file and post to the website, so it's all there for everyone to see. There's no hidden information on the annual debt statement.
Is it possible?
Mr. DiPaolo, I just have a question for you. Just, I'm just going to ask this, because that's how I feel.
Go ahead, ask it.
Do you, do you know how much in debt you are at home in your house? Right off the bat. Don't think about it for a minute. Just come out with that number right away.
Well, first of all, I'm not getting paid to know how much debt I had in my house.
Well, but you're saying she's not here tonight.
Your employee is getting paid to know how much debt the township's in, okay?
She's not here tonight to have that number. She's here for the budget meeting tonight.
Completely two different things, Peggy Sue.
Well, I'm just saying, you have to look at it that way, too. You can't aggressively say to somebody, "Do you have the number right off the top of your head?" She's doing a job to...
To me, that's like, my biggest numbers. If I was a certified accountant, for a business, a union, a company, I think on the top of my head, I would know how much in debt we are. But that's me. Okay, I'll move on, but I'm asking that this com- Okay, I'll move on, but I'm asking that this committee, or your employee here, provides us a oral presentation periodically on how much money we have, how much money we have invested, and how much money we owe, and a little bit of a detailed breakdown. Just like when you read the thing of the various capital improvements, about $3 million, can I, is this online in detail, what this $3, $4 million is going for? Where do I find this information? Instead of just hearing that, "We got bonds for $3, $4 million to upgrade this building, that building, whatever." So where would I find it in detail so I can analyze what our taxpayers' money is...
He just keeps talking. He doesn't allow you to answer.
Go ahead.
The ordinance will be posted on the bulletin board after this meeting.
And it's also posted online on our website.
Will be posted online on Monday.
Posted on the bulletin board.
Yes, it's a requirement to have your bond ordinance posted on the bulletin board.
So I got to come up here to see it?
You can also look at it online when it's up there on Monday.
On Monday, it'll be online.
Okay. Okay. All right. All right. Now, I'm asking, included in this bond money, does it include the $247,000 that we owe Johnson for the now terminated or postponed new municipal complex? Is that included in that money?
It's included in the budget, not in the bond ordinance.
So it's been paid to Johnson, the two...
It has not been paid. You just asked if it was included, and I said it's included in the budget. It's not been paid.
Okay. All right. Okay, fair enough. And what about the $35,000 for the engineer's report on the addition on this building? Is that...
That's been prior, paid prior, I believe, out of last year's budget.
Yeah, it was last year.
Okay, so that's paid. All right, so on Resolution 102, introducing the municipal budget, I'm not going to be here, so can I find that online in detail? And what would that be under?
Finance documents.
5M?
Finance.
Finance document. Okay. All right. I hope the committee considers a more transparent financial picture of our township on a monthly basis, so we could better understand where our money's going to. I'm going to talk now about the John Smith issue and the transfer of the name from one building to another.
John Smith?
On the Charles Smith Building.
Charles, you said John, that's why I was...
Charles Smith Building, which was the name of the old town hall, and it was transferred to the now Knights of Columbus building. How did that happen? Whose idea was it? Was it reviewed legally? And why was it done?
I think, Mayor, I might be able to answer some of his questions, I'm not sure all of them. In consonance with the proposed sale of the property, it was determined through title search that there was an estate that had donated property. One of the caveats of the estate donation was that a building, a building be named, the Charles A. Smith Memorial Building or Building, be named after Charles A. Smith. The community hall that I think you're referring to is the Charles Smith Building.
Right. Was that the official name of that?
Never designated or named at any time, up to the point that we attempted to sell the property. So to facilitate the transaction, the Knights of Columbus, which is the community hall, has been named the Charles A. Smith Building. The only requirement of the estate was that a building be named, that a municipal building be named, the Charles Smith, in recognition of the donation of the land. It has been done. The title company agrees with that interpretation.
I respectfully disagree with you.
I understand that.
Okay? Now, the title company?
Yes.
I'm under the understanding that a new title insurance document was created? Is that true?
I don't know what you mean by a new title.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm not sure what you're...
Well, with the existing Charles Smith Memorial Building on Route 9 in Lacey Road, that had a title insurance policy, I assume, from 1934. That's when it switched over. And now, I'm of the understanding that this title company has created a new title insurance policy that specifically puts you guys in the clear of what you're trying to do.
That's what title insurance companies are for.
Okay. Does that supersede the previous title insurance policy?
All I know is the title insurance company had agreed with that transfer. Now, it's up to them. That's why they're an insurance company.
Okay.
If someone were to litigate it, and they prevailed in the litigation, that's why the title insurance company is title insurance.
So does, did this new language...
It doesn't prevent anything from happening, it just says, in the event that it does, it's going to insure. Okay? Just like fire insurance on your house. Doesn't mean your house is going to catch on fire.
But what I don't understand, what I don't understand, I was under the impression, and I'm not completely, maybe not right, that there was an existing title insurance policy. The township got some pushback, let me, let me finish, the township got some pushback about what they did, so now the township, or their attorney, goes to the title company. Right? Were you there, Mr. Connors? For the meeting?
For what meeting?
For the title insurance company.
I didn't have a meeting with the title insurance company. The buyer would request title insurance. People who are buying a property are going to want title insurance, correct? Am I correct?
Well, as a property owner, you would want a proper title insurance policy, so no one steals your land or comes up with another deed.
Right.
Right?
If you're buying it, you want to make sure that you get good title.
Exactly. So what I'm asking...
You're not buying it, we're selling it.
What I'm asking...
Let me simplify your question. I don't know the relevance of any prior title insurance policy as compared to one that's just been issued now.
Okay, so there could be one.
I imagine it could be.
Okay. All right. Fair enough. I still got time, Peggy Sue?
Oh, you ran out of time.
You ran out a while ago.
All right, I'll come back up. I'll come back up.
I was just going to say, if you'd like to finish, you're more than welcome to.
I could violate the five minutes?
Yes.
Violate it.
Just for tonight.
Just for tonight. Just do it for tonight.
Happy Easter, right?
Get on my good side, because I don't have...
I know. It's Good Friday.
I thought you had a good side. I thought we had a good...
I do have a good side, but the more I hear about what's going on, I had to come back up here. I do have a good side.
You're listening to the wrong people out there, honestly.
That's the problem.
You shouldn't be coming to us like you are.
And having a decent conversation with us, we gladly give you this information.
I think in the continuity of questions that he has, it's important that he be able to maintain...
Right, that's right. Of course.
Say that again, the continuity of...
The continuity. You're asking questions, rather than to disrupt that, perhaps lose your train of thought, that you'd be able to stay up there.
Okay.
I think your questions are beneficial to everybody who's learning.
Don't try to be nice to him, Mr. Connors.
I'm not trying to.
He's not going to accept it.
All right. So anyways, Mr. Connors, you were not at the title meeting.
No.
Was any township committee members or Veronica at the title meeting?
No. There's no meeting for a title.
There's no meeting?
No.
No? You just call them up and say, make a new title?
Well, the attorney does that, and they do a title search to make sure it's a clean title, meaning there's no encumbrances, or liens, or bankruptcies listed for that. If you've bought a house, you understand that that gets done.
It's no different.
Quite frankly, I'm not sure where you're getting at. It doesn't matter if the title policy was written 100 years ago or yesterday. If I'm the buyer, and I want, I just want a title policy, to just protect me if anybody comes out of the woodwork. I don't know what to do, I don't know what you're getting at, whether it's 100 years ago or...
Well, I'm getting at, could be some violations of an existing...
But that's a title insurance's problem.
Well, it could be a township problem, too.
It's not a township problem.
No. We took out a policy to protect us.
Yeah, that's what the insurance is for.
Okay. All right. So you guys are in the clear, then?
Oh.
You know, because there were...
I'll accept that.
Yeah. 99%. I don't ever...
There were, there were restrictions on the deed, from what I understand.
Well...
And the deed said, from what I understand, and I might be repeating other people or whatever, basically that Charles Smith donated it for the exclusive purpose of the township people to meet, greet, meet, education, helping, you know, young people to get on the right course in life and stuff like that. You know, kind of like almost any, you know, moose or different organization. You know, it's out there for the betterment of the township and to bring people together.
Correct.
Okay. So, I have the understanding that that was going to, to stay that way forever. Am I wrong?
Yes.
Yes. How am I wrong?
When you say stay that way forever...
Well, as, as a township building...
There is a community hall.
Right.
Which is newer and better than the one that is being vacated. You're looking at me like that. I'm sure you've been in both.
Yeah, yeah. Of course, a newer building's nicer. I'm not saying that that building couldn't be renovated.
And so the township is going to provide a better Charles Smith building than the one that was originally built there.
Mm-hmm.
And it does something that hadn't done up until that point.
What's that?
Would actually name a building.
Up until that point, it hadn't been named.
Yeah.
Why, why do I see documents to say that that was...
But it wasn't. You never saw a plaque on the side of the building, you never saw any sign, there was never any resolution designating it, there was never anything established by this.
But I've seen in writing where that was called the Charles Smith Memorial Building.
Where?
On different legal papers.
Legal papers.
Next time I come, I'll bring them, okay?
Okay.
All right, and we'll discuss that.
Be happy to.
But my proposal with that whole deal, and I'm surprised that the veterans folded so easily to move over to that bomb shelter over there.
I don't think they folded.
They folded. They folded. They sat right here, and you said, "Well, we're going to do something for you, so we're going to jam you in the food bank with them people."
They are so happy over there.
And they gave up that, well, hey, I don't know. I don't know.
Have you spoken to them? You should go speak to them. They're very, very happy over there.
Okay.
Really, Steve, go see them.
All right, I believe you, Peggy Sue.
No, really, go see them. They will tell you. I mean, and not coming from me, Russ, go over and talk to them. They'll tell you.
I will, I will. I know Bernie.
Besides the fact that I never knew Bernie Snyder would fold on anything.
I know. I was just going to say, Bernie Snyder folding on something?
So we're going to call him and tell him you said he folded.
You can tell him.
Steve, I had two meetings with him in the last two months. He's a tough dude. He's a tough dude.
Okay.
Chairman Snyder's a tough dude.
All right.
What else do you have to say, Steve?
Okay, so I'm going to have to bring some documents in and read them over, because I just have notes on the different things. But my proposal, recommendation, is you stop trying to sell that thing, renovate it, maybe even get some volunteers. I'm a member of the Lacey Historical Society, and when I call an electrician or a plumber, and they're local, and I know them, they kind of work for free somewhat. So maybe we could get some people to renovate that building and stay there.
Which building are you talking about?
Do they exist? The one that you're trying to sell?
The community hall or a warden house?
The community hall. Well, I don't know what's got to be done with the, I have never been in the Warden House, but I've been in the other community hall. It's probably got good bones and everything, it just needs, you know, little tender, little tender loving care.
You're killing me today, Chris.
And that way, you guys wouldn't have all the taxpayers in a position where we kind of feel that something underhanded or improper's going on.
Not a problem.
And I can't say that for sure, but I am going to confront the committee with some documents next time I do come.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Regina Desensas, Sunset Drive Sunrise Beach. I'm sorry the doors were open, I didn't know I could still be heard, so I closed up.
It echoes in the hallway, though.
Yeah, because of the high ceiling, yeah, it echoes. First, I'd like to thank, congratulate Pete. It's the 100th anniversary of the Ocean County Health Department. I was so impressed when I...
Do I look that old?
I was so impressed when I heard that yesterday at the commissioners' meeting. There's going to be a celebration further on in the year.
Right, April 10th.
Yeah.
You're invited.
I don't know if I'll be around.
Tell me you know me.
Okay.
I don't know what that'll get you, but...
All right, I just thought it was really unique.
You're one of our own here.
You worked for the Health Department, now it's 100 years old, I think that's really cool.
Did you say 100?
Yeah, thank you, I think.
Yeah, I don't think you were on the initial board, so...
Yeah. Thank you.
I did mention last meeting, those state resolutions about the affordable housing rules would pass, and they did.
Mm-hmm. It was terrible.
Right.
It could put us in a heck of a bind. We can be sued much more easily.
I know, so, but do you have any parameters yet on how detrimental it's going to be?
It did lay out what we have to do. It's going to be a logistical nightmare for our administrators to follow.
Right now, based on some attorneys that have been reviewing the legislation and what they believe could be happening, we could be on the high side of having to come up with 325 more units. So it's not we, as in the township has to build them, but it's developers that might have to do a set aside, or put money into the Affordable Housing Fund for the township to do something like what we're doing next door with Walters Development Group.
So this is right after we're breaking even with the ones next door?
Yeah, exactly.
That's, yeah, that's what I thought.
It's a never-ending battle.
So there's, the state initially was supposed to, by August 1st, supply us with what they perceive our number should be. Now, that's been set down, has been pushed forward to December 1st, and then we have by January 25th have to have all of our crap together to say, are we going to sue the state, or are we going to come up with an alternate number and see if they agree to it? So they're giving you like a six-week window to get all this stuff in place.
That's incredible.
Yeah.
Well, good luck with that. And I just wanted to let everyone know that the Forkett River Mountain Coalition is having their annual cleanup on Sunday, April 21st. Please see their website for additional information, but it's usually a fun morning. Everyone meets around 8:00. You pick up trash at the mountain from 9:00 until 12:00, and then it's usually followed by a little.
They meet right here, right?
Yeah, usually in the parking lot, right? And then they truck everyone out to the site. I've done it a few times, but I won't be here that weekend, so I just wanted to let everyone know it's a fun morning out.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the audience that would like to speak? Go right ahead.
As long as there isn't anybody else, this I may go over.
She doesn't like the coat.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Linda Miller, Forkett River. I was here at the last meeting asking about the start of time of our meeting. I'm here with the same thing. I wish you would reconsider at least starting it at 6:30 since that is what is in our calendar for the year. As you can see tonight, people were coming in after 6:00, and now there's an accident out there. It's the heaviest time, traffic time, when people are trying to get to the meeting. So I'd like to ask the audience if there's anyone else here that would like it to start at 6:30 instead of 6:00.
I wish I put it back to 7:00.
We haven't done that since 2018.
What was that?
We ended 7:00 in 2018.
Okay.
Then we went to 6:30.
It's something we can consider. Let's say that.
I'd appreciate that because it would really help for people to be able to get here on time and attend.
Yes.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. All right, how are you?
Carol Mittlesdorf, Lenoka Harbor. I wanted to talk to you specifically about your comments earlier. I think it's a great idea that you're going out and promoting Lacey because I think Lacey is awesome, but I really think it's a good idea if everybody works to try and create Lacey's Chamber of Commerce, which doesn't exist, and I never could figure that out. It used to exist. It was very helpful to all businesses.
What had happened was, I believe that they stopped meeting. Another organization came in, offered a service under the capitalistic system that we're in, Central Ocean Business Association. KOBIA came in, and they did the entire string of pearls from the South Tombs River down to Ware Town, and they were active. They went out. They held their meetings in all the different towns since 2018. And they, and people that are business owners chose to sign up with them for their advocacy and their education or outreach and.
They meet once a month.
It's unfortunate because you had mentioned at a previous meeting that there are, there's an interest for people to come in and do scouting and film, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
A location scout. I call, I called Chamber of Commerce to find out, how do you coordinate with the township? Who's got all the rules? I called this township because I thought it was a great idea to try and promote it based on what you had said, and I call, and they're like, we don't have, they didn't, your offices did not lead me.
If I could, through the chair.
Go right ahead.
In a new direction. They just said, we don't have one.
The director of business and tourism is working with the state tourism director right now. I was with Assemblyman Rumpf and Commissioner Sadeghi a couple of weeks ago at Hotel LBI, and in order for a town to be film-ready, it's not a high watermark. I want the Film Commission to come to our town and scout it out. We've got nuclear plant, beaches, and a lion, okay? So I don't think you can, you can't get more diverse and beautiful, and a farm.
I do documentary films. I have been trying to do this for years here. I've gone out and shot numerous, for, I'm talking like 20 years. And recently, over the last 10 years, all I'm shooting is garbage. In the beautiful area, I go up and down Cedar Creek, the whole shores are covered with garbage. So I'm just saying, the reason why I didn't do the documentary and why I've been involved in Save Cedar Creek for so long is because I can either do it and say, look at this natural resource that we have, and look at the natural tourism that it could promote, and all I've got is pictures of garbage. And I can't seem to get, there's no water council in the town, there's no environmental committee active right now. So I'm just saying, I appreciate where you're going with it.
Yes, go right ahead.
In the reality of where I am in my real life, this is what I do. And I came up really short when I looked at all the opportunities that were here to bring somebody in, whether it's for photo shoots or whether it's for film. So I'm just saying.
Mr. Kenneth has something he'd like to say.
The chambers of commerce are both basically local, local groups. And the Chamber of Commerce, years ago when it was active, was a lot of small businessmen from Lacey Township. As time went on, they've gotten too busy and couldn't, you know, those, those clubs, again, they're volunteers, takes a lot of time to run those clubs. And I think not only could they not keep up with the membership, the other clubs picked them away. Like, the Rotary Club is sort of the de facto Chamber of Commerce at this point. That's all local, mostly local businessmen, so.
I don't mean to burst the bubble of what we think we're bringing here as far as tourism. I think historic tourism is really, really something that Lacey could tap into, which is a big thing that the state and the feds are trying to do right now.
Well, I'm just answering your question about the Chamber of Commerce, why there is not one.
I'm just saying, not having a Chamber of Commerce is kind of detrimental to having people like myself, that that's a normal contact, to bring in business.
I understand. So, but it's the same thing as on the Environmental Commission, and also, what else do you, we also had the Economic Development Commission, where Barry was sitting on that. What happens over time is the, is, I guess, people feel that they're not getting anything done, and so they, and the time commitment becomes too much for them, and then those boards, Peter, if you're, you're more than, we say this a lot, we say you are more than welcome. So every year, after the elections, we, if you want to submit your resume to any one of those boards, we'll take a look at it. They're appointed positions.
Well, we don't have a chamber or a.
A chamber, no, we don't. Not a chamber. We have Environmental Commission and Economic Development.
That's why I wanted to make a comment about it, because it makes it sound like we've got.
I mean, you're more than welcome to establish a chamber, but it's not a township.
But I don't have a business.
I don't think you.
Yeah, you don't, it's not, you don't, I'm not implying that you have to be a businessperson. I mean, just.
The chamber is an independent operation of the township. It was never part of the township.
I know exactly where they are, yeah.
Yeah.
And they also promote tourism and things like that, and make exactly what you're trying to do, but if you had a team of people helping you, I think it would be of value. So, just putting it out there.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Free comments. Anybody else from the audience? All right, Ms. Bidnick, come on up.
Lots of things I wanted to mention tonight. That's why I wanted to go last. First, March 26th was the 153rd anniversary of the founding of our community. During COVID, we had the 150th anniversary date, but we never really had a celebration to honor our history. We really need to do that. I'm surprised nobody even brought it up tonight at the meeting. It's the anniversary of the, of our community. So I marked it down. I was hoping somebody would bring this to the attention, but nobody did, so I'm doing it. So everybody, happy anniversary, local citizens. So, code of conduct, okay? I brought this up for the last several months. I will continue to bring it up, and why, I feel it's important. And it's important because I talk to people. I talk to a lot of people. They tell me, Mr. Bidnick, I watch you get up there. You challenge the government bodies. They try to, you know, attack you at certain times, they, et cetera. And if they do this to you, I don't have the abilities that you have, so how am I gonna get up there and be able to speak and speak my mind about things that are issues at hand? And, look, I'm a big boy. I can certainly take care of myself, but a lot of my local compatriots in my community don't have the same wherewithal. And for that reason, and I'm gonna continue at every meeting as I have, to push for a code of conduct. We need it. Two, the meeting time. 7:00, 6:30 isn't good enough. Quite frankly, if you're a working person, and so many of our people who live in our town are driving away, some have to go to New York. I know people that can't come to these meetings because they work in Manhattan. By the time they get home, they are not able to make the meeting. I just want to say this as a reminder, you know, we pay the taxes, we the citizens. This government works for us, and it should be bending over backwards to accommodate the citizens that it is elected to serve and who is paying all of you a salary. Now, my personal feeling is that these meetings shouldn't be changed, or at times, for a certain person or any individual who sits on this body. Basically, it should be for the people of our community. It's very important. I keep hearing comments that are made about, you know, we want more people to come, we want this, we want that. Well, I'm telling you how we can do it. Put it back to 7:00, please. Thank you very much. Three, and this is all said with due respect, because the person that I'm referring to, I have great respect for. Mr. Connors, at the last meeting, you made a comment concerning my behavior, and that I have a reputation of disagreeing with things that professionals project. At first, I was a little taken aback by your criticism, but after reflecting on it, I actually take it as a compliment. In this day and age.
It was meant as a compliment.
Yes. In this, in this day and age, with the mess our country has become, each and every one of us should be challenging everything that these so-called professionals and politicians are doing. I would like to remind everyone, the mess America is in today was caused by our governments. It isn't the people who are making these decisions. It is our government and the so-called professionals who are feeding them with the justifications for their actions. So I wear the comment and the badge of honor, sir, that you gave me at the last meeting. Thank you very much. Four, there were many, many, many comments on social media condemning all of the overdevelopment in our town. When will this government body finally take the stand with we the people, who it is elected to represent? Instead of making it as easy as possible for these projects, especially these larger commercial ones, why aren't you taking a firmer hand that one must conform to the existing variances, ordinances, and setbacks that are stated in our township code? If we're not gonna do that, why do we even have a township code? Okay, it's, it's time for the government body to be listening to what people want. Obviously, many individuals are not happy. I read hundreds of comments from a recent posting concerning the Maxim Drive project. I found that a government that is afraid of its constituency is the best form of government to have, because the government would never want to do anything that would rock the status quo. I have a question, though. What type of abatements did Home Depot, Walmart, the Cornerstone Properties get, especially with taxes dealing with the school district?
I just have a question. Excuse me for one second. How many more comments do you have? Because your five minutes is up, and I don't want you to go back and sit down and come back up. So is it gonna be at least another?
I have a couple more things, though. Is there anybody else that wants to speak, or no?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, that's why I waited to the end, okay? So, anyway, the question is, and hopefully somebody will be able to answer this, what type of abatements did Home Depot, Walmart, the Cornerstone Properties get, especially dealing with taxes dealing with our school district?
The only abatement program that is required is the Cornerstone at Lacey, because that's housing and mortgage and finance agency money, and that's part of the program because they're borrowing the money from the government. And to reduce the loan that they're taking from the government, they have to have, not they, but the state requires an abatement program or a pilot program, as we call it.
Okay, so.
Pilot programs in this town.
All right, so tell me, does that go on forever?
It's a 30-year, it's like with a life of the mortgage, 30.
A life of the mortgage. Now, from what I understand, there are one or two towns that actually got around this, because it was Regina who told me all about this, because this is, you know, her end of business. And I'm wondering why, especially now, you have to realize, with the school situation being what it is, and all of the kids that are probably living in that complex over here, they're basically not contributing any school taxes, because for, you know, so you and I and all the citizens in this building who are taxpayers are actually paying extra taxes for this facility that you have. But I know you guys are getting, you're getting all the property taxes.
No way to answer.
Yes.
So Seabreeze Pilot is paying approximately 90,000 years in a pilot program. Walters Phase 1 is approximately 47,000. Walters Phase 2 is approximately 33,000. They're not foregoing their taxes, that is their tax contributions, contribution to the township. It is up to the governing body to decide how that money is dispersed.
Right. But I don't believe you're giving it to the schools.
Well, we could. The schools would have to request it.
Right, okay. Because this is something that's come up amongst.
But I just want to be clear that, said, it may be a reduced rate, but they are paying their taxes.
Okay.
Just not in the form that you think.
Just to say, Mr. Bidnick, I also remember a conversation we had along the road. There wasn't like an increase of students, because what happened was, ones that were living here in town already are ones that moved over there. There was like a very, it was a very low amount of, like, the increase in number as far as students went.
May I also, I said, this, I keep the same jot of notes in my, in my book, because the same issues come up over and over and over again. In 2007, 2008, it was the, that was the peak school enrollment in Lacey Township, it was 4,897 students. I didn't pull the most recent data, but that declined all the way to 2020 to 21 to 3,823 students. That's a reduction of approximately 1,000 students. So to assume that, you know, any one of these developments is putting an extra 1,000 kids or however many kids into the school system that can't be absorbed by the schools is mistaken.
Right, but I want to explain something, since you brought up the schools, okay? Since when COVID happened, okay, and particularly, a lot of parents pulled their kids from the school district. They have not gone back, okay? Because they are homeschooling, they're sending them to private schools, or they're sending them to the, you know, the school districts that they can do. The school district, I'm sorry, and this is something, a personal beef that I have with this body. For years, the school district has been in decline. And I would expect that this government body that works here would be working on that body behind the scenes and saying, you know what? This affects the property taxes in our town and the evaluations of all of our homes.
Mr. Bidnick, I don't want to interrupt you, but I know you've, you know, been, been to the schools many times with the same argument.
Right.
And that's where you have to take this argument. We do have liaison meetings with the school system. We, you know, prod and poke on different issues, much like they prod and poke us. So, you know, currently not the liaison, but, but these, these conversations go on all the time. But that is a, that, that issue in particular, where you're gonna say that the schools are not up to par, we'll say, that's a school board issue that is not, that has not, has anything to do with us at this committee.
I understand, but at the last meeting, Mr. McDonald here was talking about in detail. Look, if you don't want to, if you do not want to have any government or, excuse me, any public comment at these meetings about the schools, I suggest that you don't talk about them. And that's just what I'm saying, because it works both ways. I'm just explaining.
Wait a second. We have people in the audience saying that we're not providing enough information, and so now we have a liaison meeting, which is a private meeting, not subject to, so, so that, we all comment on private meetings. All our comments here were private meetings, or private engagements. Pete on the radio, Peggy Sue at any of the firehouse functions she goes to, and Tim on the liaison meetings, and myself on the planning board. I said, I'm, that's the job, is to mention these things that are going on.
That's perfect. Well, if I, this is a public meeting of our town. If I want to bring it up, I have, you know, I do.
But you've made this point many times, and our answer is the same. That is an issue for the school board first.
Right. If I may. Just don't do a reevaluation because of the schools.
Let me, let me just say this. I've been liaison with Deputy Mayor Correto for five, six years now, Pete.
Yes, sir.
Not one time, not one time, we probably hold three or four liaison meetings with the school board per year, have they mentioned the overcrowding of the kids from next door. Doesn't happen. Doesn't happen.
I'm just looking at, excuse me, I just want to mention what the cost, the actual cost to educate a student in our school district.
It's expensive. There's no question about that.
Right, there is.
It's a little over 14,000.
So, it's actually 19. But actually, when you, when you look at the numbers with these new housing developments that are going up, the taxes that are gonna be brought in for each one of these units is not going to cover if the people have a couple of kids in them. We're all gonna land up in our town paying for all these people. That is the reason why, part of the reason why I'm against the overdevelopment.
They're gonna be paying for it, too. They're gonna be paying property taxes.
Yeah, they will, but not enough to cover.
But either, you don't either. You're not paying 19,000 dollars in property taxes.
I don't have any children.
It doesn't matter.
But you're not paying 19,000. And I'm not paying 19,000 in property taxes.
Okay, I have, look, I'm gonna say something to you. I have a bigger gripe than most people in this town. You want to know why? Because I never had a child in this school district, okay? I don't even use your garbage. You have never seen a garbage can in front of my house. Let me finish. The only time in the 19 years that I have lived here, that a service that I have required was when I had to call the police department twice, and thank God they were there to help me. But I do have a legitimate gripe about the taxes and how we're spending it and the way things are going. taxes, and how we're spending it, and the way things are going. I'm not part of the friends and family network in this community. I'm not one of the people who's connected to all the bodies, who's getting a salary, their benefits, and their pensions. And there are a lot of us in this community who really don't like it. You know what? Let me finish.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay? So, I am. I'm a little bit livid about this, because I am very active in the school. I've been working over there for over 12 years. The stuff that I'm talking about now, six years ago, I warned them about what's happening right now. They did nothing, okay? I've helped get three people on that school board now. They're not in control, but I helped get three people elected to make this change. So I've been doing my work and my due diligence, just like I'm trying to do here. I want you guys to do better. That's the point I'm making to you. We have a problem with the schools. You guys have influence. This is the kind of influence, let me finish. This is the kind of influence that you can use. They, last year, you gave them a half a million dollars from the MUA. Did you not?
Yes.
There's influence. You gave money. So the point of that I'm saying to you is, as a taxpayer and an advocate for education, for our young, that you do the best that you can to put pressure on that body to do better, because it affects all of our property taxes. And that is an important and passionate issue for me.
Thank you.
On another note, I also wanna, I'm glad you did the condemnation tonight for the, our public library, because, as you all know, as a former library director, libraries are the people's university. They're open to everyone. It helps all masses of the population where they can get a really broad education, even if they can't afford to go to college. So I'm glad you did that tonight. I much appreciate that. On another note, I have a solution for your space problems, which should only cost a fraction. One, and I've said this before, take the Knights of Columbus building and make it the new police headquarters. It's in a better location than where it is now, and structurally, with accommodations, it would serve the purpose. Two, keep the community hall for the purpose it was donated to this town for. As a community hall used for social and educational purposes, do the same with the upgrades to the building. It deserves it. It's part of our historical legacy. And believe me, when you destroy your history, you have no future. Use the existing police station for extra space for the government offices after you move it over to the new-named community hall. And the reason why I say this is I actually care about everybody's taxes. I know we have problems. I'm giving you solutions, solutions that wouldn't cost very much. I, I think we could get everybody in this town to support these things.
Do you realize that the community hall is smaller than the current police station?
Well, it looks like it's larger, actually.
It's not. It's probably about 7,000 square feet smaller.
But it doesn't have, you could reconfigure that building if you needed to, inside. Yeah, you could.
Not with, not with the new standards.
Please continue.
Okay, thank you very much. So, what I'm proposing would save the taxpayers a lot of money. Okay, so, all right. So on another note, and this is like really the most important thing, I'd like to wish everyone in our community a very happy and blessed Easter. Please cherish your loved ones, as life is fleeting moment, and the importance of the moment can never be understated. God bless local citizens, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Happy Easter to you. Happy Easter to you, too. Anyone else from the public like to speak?
Okay, I really would like to respond, but I'm gonna buy my time.
No, you're not.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah. Motion to, motion to adjourn.
Real quick, sorry. Resolution 2024-111. Resolution in town, Lacey County, of motion to state, New Jersey, authorizing the convening of an executive session in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Cortezolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. No further business.
Take care, guys.